Well, have the pleasure by Mr. Johnson.
Is she okay? Shall we pray? Eternal God our Father, we thank you for the privilege of prayer and allowing us this time to come together in this city that we may transact the business that is needed to bring all of us together, that the inclusive spirit of unity and working together may be one. We thank you for having brought us a year thus far, and now as we prepare tonight, give us wisdom and insight, and then help us to inspire others as they do the business of the city, in Jesus' name. Amen?
Amen.
The pleasure.
The pleasure is in the heart of the United States of America and the citizens of our nation, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord is our God.
Okay, uh, we're going to D., uh, roll call, Ms. Thiel.
Mr. Marshall.
Present.
Mr. Fowler.
I'm here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Lawson.
Present.
Mr. Silver.
Here.
Mr. Hobbs.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Okay, we're going to eat a consent calendar.
Uh, send six somewhere legal or something. Public safety compensation.
Okay, incentive legal.
Legal?
Um.
Ten public works.
You want to, uh, you want to visit, uh...
Not just a donation.
Okay, the move by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries. Go to F. Ordinance for Final Adoption Subject to Public hearing.
Number fifteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending oh seven, oh eight capital budget for odor emissions at wastewater treatment plant.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number sixteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for odor emission reduction project at Alexandria wastewater treatment plant.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number seventeen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a fifteen-foot wide utility servitude located along the common boundary line between lot thirteen and fourteen of England Drive subdivision.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number eighteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance annexing lots five, six, and seven of Bayou Acres subdivision located in section twenty-eight, T four N, R one W, and being located at thirty-three and thirty-seven Calvert Drive as requested by Dr. John Rhodes, and zoning said property to C one general commercial district upon annexation.
Move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number nineteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a fifteen-foot wide utility servitude situated in Calvin, or Calhoun Commercial Park.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a fifteen-foot wide utility servitude situated in section nineteen, T four N, R one W, of England Drive subdivision.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an engineering agreement with TRC engineers for Robin Road and Azalea Lane sewer improvement project.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Lawson, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-two, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending oh seven, oh eight capital budget to fund the purchase of property located off Bolton Avenue for the purpose of a multi-use Alexandria bus and transportation facility.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Charles Cooper to purchase property located off Bolton Avenue for the purpose of a multi-use Alexandria bus and transportation facility.
Move.
Move by Ms. Marshall, second by Mr. uh, Fowler. Discussion. Did I say discussion? Okay, we were...
Yeah.
I guess we're going to discuss it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I can go podium.
Could you give your name?
Go to podium.
Go to podium, give your name and, uh, your address.
I'm Alfred Cook, senior. I'm seventy-seven years old. I've lived on the corner of Monroe and Florence all my life. It's a peaceful neighborhood, fairly peaceful, and I object to this bus terminal being put in front of my house. Uh, I don't want all the noise and pollution and derelicts it may bring in, and if you can see possible, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't think you'd want it in front of your house. Uh, I wish you'd give us some consideration. My brothers, I've got three brothers, we've all, four of us live there, and we've enjoyed it, kept the old house up. The old house was built in nineteen and four, and it's in fairly good shape, and I like to keep it like that, so do what you can.
Okay, you know what else? Put your name and address.
My name is Alfred E. Cook, junior. My address is forty-seven oh five Windover Boulevard, Alexandria. I'm a third-generation Cook that has lived in that home. Uh, our home was built in nineteen four, as my father said. It's listed in five publications, all of which are in the Library of Congress. Our home is a complete Queen Anne Colonial Revival Home, the only one in the state of Louisiana. It was copied from California almost, a little over a hundred and three years ago, so I consider this, uh, uh, early parts of Alexandria, and, uh, I do, uh, hope you will reconsider, uh, uh, item twenty-three.
Uh, we got a, uh... Yes.
Sherman Cook, eighteen oh two Shirley Park, Alexandria. I was brought up in that home like Alfred was talking about. Uh, this is one of the oldest homes in this area. Uh, it's older than Washington Gold Rings, it's older than Hotel Bentley. Uh, it's been here a long time. Uh, there was some conserva-, uh, uh, talk, um, last week, I think, about making, um, Florence Avenue, uh, into like a historic, um, area. Uh, this may upset that a little bit. Uh, we need to look at, frankly, I would like to see, before any vote is taken, what are we talking about? A bus barn? What, you know, I'd like to have something more definitive than that before all of you vote. Uh, like to see some plans, some, uh, long-term planning and so forth. Give it your consideration.
Okay, thanks.
I'm Charles Charrier, and I'm president of the Historical Association, and Mrs. Cook and Mr. Cook are on our board, and I certainly defer to their feelings. Uh, their home is in that vicinity. I had a conversation earlier today with Kaye McGills, and I take great consolation in what she told me. Yes, the Historical Association appeared before this council just several weeks ago, and we thank the council because we began the process to name that street Florence Avenue, Mansion Row. And my concern is naturally aesthetics, 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 aesthetics. Um, my conversation with Kaye today, whatever you do in that area, of course, whatever the city does decide to do, I take consolation, and in some manner, I want to applaud the mayor, and I want to applaud Kaye and the city council, because this is what was told to me. My wife said to me this morning, "Why are you going to the city council meeting?" I said, "I'm going because whatever needs to be done there needs to be done in a historically sensitive manner, considering Mansion Row and the homeowners in that area." She said, "You're wasting your time." And I, when I talked to Kaye, I said, "My wife is, has very little faith. I'm going home tonight to tell my wife, 'Oh, ye of little faith.'"
You sure you, baby, get in there? You too, right? On TV, right?
What was told to me is that this project is coming down the pipe with landscaping that is historically significant, sensitive to that area. Gentlemen, ladies, city leaders, this is a new day, and I applaud you. The issue of whether this what will be there or that, I can understand Mrs. Cook's concern. She's a great friend of mine, but the fact that attention is being given to that area in a historically sensitive manner, even concerning the landscaping, is a great accomplishment, and I applaud ev- each and every one of you for that consideration.
If y'all would pass the story, I don't have the wood cup.
Too short on one end. I'm Corley Cook. Alfred and I own the Cook Home on Florence Avenue. It is listed on the National Register. It has a Louisiana State marker for historic preservation on it. It was sponsored by the, the Stark Association of Central Louisiana, was paid for by the Cook family. I'm not a born Cook. I was a bell guard. It's not my roots, but I will fight to my death to keep that property from being low graded or destroyed in any way. You cannot stop a property owner from selling his property, but I ask the city and all of you to remember, this is a neighborhood. It needs to be brought up, it needs improvement, but until you can guarantee me what that property will look like in five or ten years from now, fine, but nobody can promise that. The city can buy it if they want to, but it's like them, me giving the city my checkbook to do exactly what you want with it. And, I must say this, we have people that park in front of our house every day. They read that marker. How many town, homes in the city of Alexandria? I was shocked when I picked up this. I thought, "My God, Alfred's got a house for sale." How many people, homes, wherever you live, is their home put on piece of paper like this, a great place to live? Now, depending on what goes across the street from me, that may change, and it needs to be changed, and I'd mind for the city to try to keep it in its historical way, okay? Saturday evening, my grandnephew's mother called me. She says, "Aunt Corley, this history class at Country Day School, they're, I don't know what grade he's in, sixth, seventh grade, he, his assignment for that history class, the whole class, was given the whole complete alphabet. Every child in that class has got to take that alphabet by one, start at A, find three historical markers, take a picture by it, and write a story about it." I think that's a compliment. That school ought to be complimented for that. How many schools care about history? Who cares about history? I've even talked to members of my own family. Well, that's just costing the government. I said, "It's because you don't own a historic piece of property." That's my home. I intend to die there. I'm not going to Greenwood until I die at that house. I am going to talk to Alexandria Country Day School, with permission of Mr. Charles Charrier. We are going to start a young historical association in central Louisiana for these young people, educate them, because most of the people that inherit property in this part of Alexandria, they leave town, they sell it, slumlord buy it, and there you go. Someone mentioned to me, "We bought the house in nineteen sixty-nine from the Cook heirs." Someone said, "Corley and Alfred, what are y'all going to do? That neighborhood is going down." I said, "I'm here to tell you that I knew Mary Ann O'Shea Cook when I met my husband in nineteen and forty-eight. She struggled till nineteen sixty-three, when she died, to save that property. There was no homestead exemption. She sold pecans and counted every one of them to make sure she had money for her taxes. That little old lady ain't going to be in heaven and not know that I didn't fight for her property. I beg you to, if you buy that property, please, please, keep up its history, because that would be a disaster." Not just my house, Warren and Ste- Andrea Warren just bought the Law Home home a year and a half ago, nineteen eight. It needs a lot of repair. This is this young couple from New Orleans. They bought a double lot next to them that was vacant. They're improving it to bring different people into the neighborhood. We bought a lot behind us. I have a little lady living in that house. You could eat off of her floors, and I hope she lives there till I die. You have got to buy your own property in these neighborhoods to keep it up. And I will say, from ninety-six Florence Avenue to Olive Street, we, that home was built in nineteen four. The Cook family heirs own it. We're going to live there. The Thompson-Hoggies home is still owned by those people. Mr. William Sherman Cook sold that to Ben Thompson, January, June the twenty-twelfth, nineteen seven, and it's still owned by the heirs of that family. How many streets in this town that you can go through and see homes, four homes, over a hundred years old and still there? I appreciate y'all. I expect you to keep in contact with me. Please, please, consider the tourism and the value of this town.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cook. I think my own then.
I'll give it to my district council, then I'd like to say something. Um, Ms. Cook, Mr. Cook, I promise you that it would be nothing put there that would be devaluing your property.
That's today. What about five years from then?
Well, Ms. Cook, have I lied to you before? If you come to me and you told me something...
I'm not used to a promise.
I'm in the head, I've, I've, I've stood up for you, right? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand up now. We're not gonna, the, the bus transfer station is actually, it's gonna be on Bolton Avenue, it won't be on Florence, but it's good, they need a space to turn around in. We was not, I promise you that we would not do anything to devalue your property or to make anything in that neighborhood look bad. I promise you that. You got my word. I ain't got nothing but my word.
Forget his word, you got my word.
Administration, Ms. Gill and the mayor, you know, we...
What I like to see us do, and that's what I'm suggesting, uh, from the council and certain administration, is we give them assurances, and I felt their passion about the property, and I appreciate that, and I too value historic properties, and I know the work, Ms. Cook, that you've done and your family to preserve it.
Well, I'll say, this council and the mayor's frustrations, but what about the next year?
Well, that's, that's what I'm suggesting, that we put some type of assurances in there that will guarantee, now, I'm not the lawyer, we have a lawyer to my right that represents us, uh, that we put the assurances in there. You have a brilliant lawyer that sits at the helm, uh, Mr. Charrier, too, uh, that we give you the assurances, and before we do anything, you see a copy of the rendition that we're gonna do, that not only blends in with, uh, the properties in that area, but it complements it, and I'd like to see that, uh, we give all, uh, all the folk in that area, because that is Mansion Row, those type of assurances, uh, before we, before I know I vote to, uh, to anything.
Can I say one more thing? Cook property starts with one row of Florence. It's over two hundred feet. My son, daddy's son, owns the second lot next to us. That's almost three hundred feet from the car and one yard, that's Florence. Then there's the E. Company, which is all in this property, then there's the Thompson-Hoggies property, a little bit longer than Florence. Then portion of two houses, and then that Palmer, which was over, and we got the Lacy Baller home, all of them sold around here. I don't know if any of you got a ride down towards that point, if you're familiar with any Chinese on the paper, or something like Cook Road, then the historic issue. I just want y'all to know what this city has in the back pocket, if they play it right.
Uh, Mr. Marshall, we just want to say that, as we said before, we'd recommend doing it for land banking purposes anyway, so that we can determine what's right for that property. Right now, what's there, I think, detracts more from what we have envisioned. Uh, Kaye and I committed, the minute we started talking to Mr. Cooper, who's, who's been a gentleman about this whole thing, uh, that we wanted Ms. Cook to sit on the design team and have a say from the very beginning to the very end, before we do the first thing to the property, to ensure that it reflects, uh, not only the, what is considered by her specifically and others to be, uh, the historic nature of the area, but that there are tons of things, and I'm gonna let Kaye speak to that, about transit funds that have to do with landscaping and things. You can do all kind of hidden things with landscaping now. The idea that we have is when you look out of your front door, you see something better than you see now, and that's, that's where we are.
It won't take much to improve.
And that would, well, and that's my point. Ms. Cook just said it wouldn't take much, in her opinion, to improve where it is now, and Mr. Marshall, what that means is, although we can't bind five and ten years away, we know that if we give you something better now that happens in the next three years, we've given you something better than you have right now going in tomorrow, and that is meaningful, and I think that's what we can deliver to.
I appreciate it.
Ms. McGills may have something more to add to that.
And, um, I want to commend all of the, the people that live in the area, and Andrea and her husband, and, and the Cooks, for, um, preserving something that, that is so important to our community, and anything that we do, we believe will enhance what you have already begun there. You know, in, in this administration, um, our Historic Preservation Commission has become very active, and we've, we've supported them, and this council has supported them to the extent that we've matched a, a grant to allow them to conduct a survey of Bolton Avenue, and we've committed to the revitalization of Bolton Avenue, and we believe this is one important step as an anchor for the revitalization of Bolton Avenue. There are federal transportation funds available that we can apply for in the form of a grant to build a multi-use bus transfer station. Um, under those funds, we can extend landscaping, sidewalks, and lighting within fifteen hundred feet of, of the radius of our property, so down Bolton Avenue, um, down Monroe Street. We can also, under federal transportation funds, apply for funding for transit police. We don't have a transit police system presently, but that's something that we certainly could look into in the future, and, and we may deem necessary and appropriate. We can receive those funds, and I believe the funds are, are ninety-ten match for transit police, so if we, um, created a transit, um, police system in the future, those, uh, those officers would be paid primarily through federal funds, and we think that would add to and enhance your area. Um, we hope to, to create, um, an atmosphere in your neighborhood that will preserve the historic nature of it, and will do everything we can to be sensitive to that, and we truly believe that anything we do will be in that, that, uh, along those lines. This also fits very appropriately with the expropriation program that, that we are in the process right now of contracting with J. Quad for, and, um, in speaking with both Ms. Cook and, and Ms. Warren previously, and Charlie Charrier, um, I assured them that when, uh, James Gilliam from J. Quad comes to begin his survey and his community meetings, to develop the community development plan that is necessary for us to implement the expropriation program, that we will meet with y'all, because I think your neighborhood is one of the areas that will be addressed under that program. We want to know what you foresee as appropriate redevelopment and infill in your neighborhood. We recognize that there are problems with, um, too many owners not living in the properties, and we want to help you there, and we want to help revitalize that area, so this, this administration, um, the mayor, and the city council, we're all committed to making, uh, your neighborhood the best it can be, and preserving what little historic, um, what few historic buildings we, we have left in our city.
Ms. Cook, uh, you okay? Okay. Any other discussion? I want to make sure. Okay. All in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Twenty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract of receipt and release with the Alexandria Port Authority.
So move.
Second. Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Twenty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to grant an easement through and across the levee land upon which the eight pipelines connecting the Port Authority and Petron Tank Farm currently exist, and to enter into an assignment.
Second. Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion.
Mr. Hobbs, uh, Mr. Hobbs, both this ordinance and the prior ordinance relate to our anticipated sale of surplus property at the port. Uh, the second ordinance, it's currently under discussion, uh, we have prepared in final form, which I believe is probably in your books, uh, it deals with, uh, with, with the granting of easements that are necessary for some pipelines that go under city property that compose the levee out by the port. Uh, it's anticipated that this ordinance or the prior ordinance would be companions with an ordinance, uh, that Ms. Thiel has had published this afternoon in the town talk, which will be laying over for fifteen days, which will deal with actually the, the sale and transfer of a seven-acre site for an industrial site at the port. Both these ordinances are required. Uh, if there are any other questions, uh, I would entertain a discussion, otherwise that would be the information that you would need.
Okay, all right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-six, to consider final adoption of an ordinance rezoning property located on Versailles Boulevard across from Callis Circle, from C two general commercial district to P D planned development, specifically P U D planned unit development with land use areas of multifamily and commercial areas.
Move. Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-seven, to consider final adoption of an ordinance annexing a planned development with multifamily neighborhood and general commercial areas as a diverse use corridor zoning district as described by the Bayou Rapids Development Master Site Plan for the property located at one hundred Browns Bend Road as requested by the property owners, Bayou Rapids Development and zoning said property to P D planned development.
Move by Ms. uh, Marshall, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-eight, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a subdivision flats for Tennyson Oaks subdivision phase seven, C, eight, and nine.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number twenty-nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the dedication of a sanitary sewer main servitude being dec- dedicated by the city and Rapids Parish Police Jury to the sewer district number one of Rapids Parish.
Move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion, all in favor? All right. Opposed, motion carries.
Number thirty- Number thirty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to remove the existing contract with Belsco for its concealable soft body armor vest for the Alexandria Police Department.
Second. Move by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Marshall. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Number thirty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a timber deed with England Economic and Industrial Development District for removal of timber from, with the, within the runway clear zone at Alexandria International Airport.
Second. Move by Ms. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion, I think, on this.
Yes, Mr. President, on page one of the timber deed at the last whereas, I'd ask for a technical amendment striking the language which includes, quote, "any object of natural growth beginning at the ground level." I want the council to understand that what we envision is allowing the England Authority to remove that timber which is within the zone prohibited by the FAA regulations and/or growth which is above the level which is prohibited by the FAA. I think the language in that last whereas clause is a little bit too broad and I'd like to just make it a little more specific.
I move for the original as amended, suggested to be amended by the county.
I'll second. And are, are you saying there that, that they're to take it down to ground level?
Well, they wanted a provision in there that said that they could take anything they wanted down to the ground level. What I'd like to see is that it be limited to growth which is either in the zone prohibited by the FAA or it's too tall, not necessarily just clear cut the whole thing.
I, I agree with you, but that, that they take should be taken to ground level and not have stumps.
Well, it would depend, if you're going up a slope, that's a problem. It's different from the beginning to the end. What we just didn't want to do is make a factual finding at the city saying, this is what it is. If you give it the definition that we're talking about, it, it just gives us room, we can change the language to reflect it, whatever we need. But it just, we, we follow what the FAA requires, Mr. Fowler, nothing more, nothing less.
Well, the only thing I'd hate to see is, is, as you're talking about a sloped growth, where they've just topped the trees and left different varying high stumps the further they went away from the runway. I think that if they do that, they should just take it out.
I don't think we're that bored anymore.
No, you don't.
We don't.
No.
It's extremely technical.
Yeah, but I've seen what they've done before and that's what they've done. So not necessarily this group, but...
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Lawson, second by Mr. Fowler. An amendment, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we've got to go back.
On the original amendment.
Originally amended.
Yeah.
I want the original amended. Move on, second.
We, we have a motion by Fowler and second by Mr. Silver.
Yeah, okay. All in favor? Both, motion carries.
Mr. President, items number 32 and 33 are both laid for two weeks.
Okay. Now we'll go to G, Public Care Development.
Number 34, to continue a stay of demolition order for 28 Prospect Street.
Move, second. By, what's that?
The administration recommends continuation to March the 11th.
Okay, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Number 35, to continue public caring on structure located at 723 Wooder. Administration requests a continuation to March the 11th.
March the 11th, second. Okay, move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Public Care is now closed, we go to H, Resolution.
Number 36, to consider adoption of a resolution electing a president of the Alexandria City Council.
I would like to nominate Louis Marshall as the president-elect for the Alexandria City Council.
Second. Any other nominations? Okay, it's been moved and second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Marshall is the next president of the council. Go to 37.
To consider adoption of a resolution electing a vice president of the Alexandria City Council.
Mr. President, I would nominate Louis Marshall.
Second. Okay, second by Mr. Silver. Move by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Silver. All in, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Lawson is the new vice president of the city council. Now we'll go to I, committed.
Finance Committee, Mr. Lawson.
Something you add, number...
Public Works, Mr. Silver. Legal Committee, Mr. Smith.
I have one item for introduction, authorizing the mayor to enter into a grand agreement with the Shepherd Center of Central Louisiana for the operation of a homeless emergency shelter and a homeless prevention program.
It's not from committee. Utility Committee, Mr. Fowler.
No report.
Yeah, at the end. Community Development, Mr. Marshall.
No report.
Personnel, Mr. Johnson.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Marshall.
No report.
A&E Review, Mr. Fowler.
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawson.
No report.
Here we go to 47.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get an introduction from the floor.
Yeah, we need, now Ms. Smith before...
The administration has presented a fact sheet. It's an ordinance for introduction to purchase a street sweeper for the street department. It's to be made off of a city, a Bossier City...
Contract.
Contract. Yeah, it's a piggyback off of the contract.
Okay, move by Ms. Smith, second. To put it on, yeah. Okay. Second, put it on the agenda. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, okay, now we need another motion.
I'll introduce this.
Okay, move by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
You don't send it anywhere, do you?
No, no, no. Okay, we have, we have Mr. Jackson Lee.
Say your name, address. Yeah, my name is Jack Reed Lee, 246 Shetter Avenue. The problem that we having is that the streets not being cleaned like they should. And, you know, I'm, I live in all of that, I've been, living all of this for all my life. But they clean up downtown, but what about the low income, they can't get done over there. We should have to call them, tell them when the street need be cleaned. And then they want to put the lights up, but they go down Bolton Avenue, right, please put them up. We got, so some people here that we have kids. My concern about the kids in, in this facility, and, I think, they want to do their duty. They see what they going to do and what they ain't going to do. And something need be done by it. Just like we got there, like you're on, by the side base yard, we got homeless people sitting on the sidewalk, underneath the bridges, because they ain't got nowhere to put them at. Something need be done, y'all take that consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. We will...
Just want to extend well wishes to the new officers and we look forward to a new year together and getting things done for the city. Congratulations to both of you and from the administration. Thank you to President, former Vice President, who's now sent into the presidency for, for last year. I know folks tend to focus on the negative stuff, Mr. Hobbs, but we got a lot done and they don't get to see us working together. I remember when Reverend Green came to a meeting and you and I were walking out laughing and shaking hands about something, he goes, wait a minute, nobody ever talks about this. He wanted to get a camera that day. And people forget that that's what happens 99% of the time. 1% of the time, of course, is what people, sometimes our friends in the media focus on and, and that's, that's all right, too, because that's all about people, you know, having the right to know what's happened. So congratulations to all of you, look forward to next year.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Just me and the chairman?